But we will begin the meeting for July 16th, Order Commissioners, with an observance of a moment of silence. Please rise for the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have a very busy agenda, but before we begin that, we'll ask Jay if there are any hands raised.
No, there are no hands raised at the moment.
All right, and I'd like to announce before we get into the agenda that an executive session was held yesterday, Wednesday, July 15th, for purposes of litigation discussion on July 15th. And now we'll look for approval of the minutes of our July 2nd meeting, our last public meeting.
Make a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question or additions or deletions regarding the minutes that were made available to you in your packets? If not, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you. We'll go on now to our treasurer's report with Treasurer Nguyen.
Okay, good morning, everyone.
Morning.
We had receipts on 7/14 and 7/15 of $422,133.45. That brought us to a total cash of $4,544,549.23. Our expenditures were $1,063,143.30. Our tax claim is $98,410.70, leaving us a balance of $3,382,995.23.
I'll make a motion to accept the treasurer's report as presented.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying, I'm sorry, was there a question?
I just was mentioning, going to mention that I don't see the balance from our our fund that we have, it's not on the back of the sheet.
Okay, we'll have to get that to you. I do have to correct, make some corrections on it, which I haven't had a chance to do, but the ARC payment was made and all the other money that I had assigned for payroll is still there. So I haven't had to use that yet.
Okay.
How much is out of it right now?
Out of what?
Out of the account.
Out of which one? Our assigned funds? Our reserve fund money is all there.
It is there, okay.
I haven't used any of that. What I did use earlier this year was paid back already.
Thank you.
Okay, no further questions. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So.
Okay, so another thing I would have is, I would like to get it out through the media about our tax discount rates and our net amount rate. Dates now, our discount period has ended as of June 30th, but the net amount, which would be on your bill, that middle number, is due until October 31st. So no penalty will be added till November the 1st. So if we could get that out to people, a lot of people are sending in penalty now, which is what their bill probably says, but that 6/30 date should be changed to 10/31 on the bills. So if we could get that out to people somehow, I would greatly appreciate it.
All right, yep, spread the word, the discount period has passed. Anything else, Sally?
That's it.
All right, thank you for your report. We'll move on now to Michelle Idris and Stefano of our Human Resources Department.
Yeah. Under Personnel Transactions, Resignations and Terminations, Richard Heverling, Sr., Casual Part-Time Door Monitor, resignation effective July 13th; Rhonda Rafferty, Telecommunicator, resignation effective July 15th; Jonathan Norton, Part-Time Central Booking Agent, resignation effective July 7th; Michael Feliciano Calderon, Imaging Clerk, Rescind Offer of Employment, effective July 13th; Yvette Omera Diaz, Full-Time DJ Clerk/Interpreter, resignation effective July 22nd; Jamie Rakowski Gerhart, Probation Officer II/Assistant Supervisor, resignation effective July 23rd; and Dylan Moring, Full-Time Deputy Sheriff, resignation effective July 24th.
Make a motion to approve the resignations and terminations.
I'll second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded, then we accept those changes. Any comment or questions on any of those? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Under Changes to Status Transfers and Promotions, Lisa Rockrich, Promotion from Clerk Type II at Area Agency on Aging to Clerk Type III at the rate of $989.06 by weekly effective August 24th; Indira Gonzalez, Promotion from Intake Officer/Interpreter in Domestic Relations to Conference Officer/Interpreter at the rate of $1,786.04 by weekly with $57.69 by weekly interpreter pay, effective July 27th; and Stuart Stowell, Promotion from Telecommunicator in the Department of Emergency Services to 911 Supervisor at the rate of $1,870.25 by weekly, effective July 27th.
Make a motion to accept the changes of status as read.
Second the motion.
It's been moved and seconded. Any comment or question? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, so ordered.
Under Other Transactions, Children and Youth Would Like to Hire Elena Janczewka as a caseworker I at the rate of $1,197.14 by weekly, effective July 27th; Children and Youth Would Like to Hire Jamie Montalvo as a caseworker I at the rate of $1,197.14 by weekly, effective August 3rd; President Judge Tewalk Would Like to Hire Brian Bray as a jury attendant at the rate of $10.54 per hour, effective July 24th; District Attorney's Office Would Like to Hire Taylor Delisle as a Secretary D at the rate of $930.65 by weekly, effective July 20th; President Judge Tewalk Would Like to Hire Chelsea Rice as a docket specialist in Domestic Relations at the rate of $849.98 by weekly, effective July 27th; President Judge Tewalk Would Like to Hire Terry Walton Smith as an imaging clerk in Domestic Relations at the rate of $849.98 by weekly, effective July 27th; President Judge Tewalk Would Like to Hire Sharon Settler as a casual part-time DJ clerk floater at the rate of $11.33 per hour, effective July 20th; Barb Smith Would Like to Hire Wendy Garrett as a general clerk C in the clerk of courts at the rate of $870.18 by weekly, effective July 27th; Sheriff Klinger Would Like to Hire Darrell Ware as a casual part-time deputy sheriff at the rate of $13.10 per hour, effective July 20th; and Sally Nguyen Would Like to Hire Madison Stickler as an accounting clerk C at the rate of $849.98 by weekly, effective July 27th.
Make a motion to approve the personnel transactions as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, then we approve the transactions as presented. Any comment or question? Not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Moving on to Salary Board, Motion to Approve All Transactions Previously Read Plus the Following: David Schaper, Salary Increase Detective to the rate of $2,542.28 by weekly, effective July 26th; Drew Harris, Longevity Payment Full-Time Correctional Officer at the prison, One-Time Payment of $1,250, effective July 30th; and Shane House, An Incremental Increase Full-Time Correctional Officer at the prison to $17.01 per hour, effective July 26th.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, then we approve the Salary Board transactions. Any comment or question? None, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Same sign, so moved. Thank you, Michelle. Morning, Stephanie.
Good morning.
Morning, Stephanie.
Morning. Under Conference Seminar Request, under Mandated, Megan Vishon and Jody Boyd from Children and Youth Would Like to Attend Celebrating Cultural Diversity Online on August 5th, $110 total registration fee, five and a half credits mandated by DHS. Joanna Cotto, Charlene Roar, Chad Wolford, Adina Smart, Corey Earl, Christopher Falker, Lori Bradley, Kim Briggs, Janine Mouser, Danielle Gray, Kim Shaw, Matthew Moffo, Kayla Conyers, Brianna Ranner, and Rhonda Shoup from MHIDEI Would Like to Attend the 2020 Cultural Diversity Conference Online on August 5th, $855 registration fee, six credits mandated by DHS and OCDEO. No, No Aguilar Gonzalez and Jermaine McQueen from Probation Services Would Like to Attend Advanced Fundamentals of Handguns in Anvil on July 16th, No Registration Fee, eight credits mandated by FETC.
Motion to approve.
I'll second the motion and also point out that two of them are online with Zoom and the last one is in Anvil, so that nobody is leaving the county.
So noted. Any additional comment or question? If not all in favor, approving those mandated requests.
Commissioner, we have a, we have a hand raised.
Okay, well, go ahead. We'll accept it, I guess. We're in the middle of a.
Well, I was wondering, well, actually, a hand just went down. Sorry.
Okay. Jamie, did you have a comment?
Only, only about where you were in the process. To take a question, but it's moved.
Okay, thank you. All in favor of the motion as presented, in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Under Non-Mandated, Helen Lidle, Ruth Snyder, Ken Bitman, Christine Wolf, Angela Spangler, and Christina Horst from Area Agency on Aging Would Like to Attend the 2020 Cultural Diversity Conference Online, August 5th, $330 total registration fee.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion, a second to approve that Area Agency on Aging request. Any comment or question? If not, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Mike Anderson from Voter Registration Would Like to Attend the AEPCEP Association Meeting in the Poconos on August 6th and 7th, $15 registration fee, lodging, mailing, meals, parking, and toll reimbursement.
Move to approve.
I do have a question.
Do you have a second?
A second, but with a question.
Yep.
There are restrictions against traveling, and I just wondered if they're going to change that to a Zoom meeting?
I'm not unsure if they will or not. We can ask.
I don't think there's any restriction in Pennsylvania.
It's the Poconos, Julie.
The Poconos, it's part of Pennsylvania.
I understand, but some of the areas are really climbing in numbers, and I don't know where each area will go until then, and I think that we need to monitor that.
Okay.
So noted. Any other discussion? On favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Okay, we're right on time for Holly Leahy. Jay, is she in the queue?
Is there ever their hand raised?
There she is.
You're on mute, Holly.
Good morning. Thank you so much for having me this morning. This morning, I am presenting a draft of the Lebanon County Human Services Plan to you in order to answer any questions you may have, address any necessary revisions, and hopefully obtain your approval to submit the document to the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services. The creation of the Human Services Plan is a collaboration of multiple county departments that are comprised of the Human Services Block Grant. So this includes mental health, intellectual disabilities, the Lebanon County Commission on Drug and Alcohol, as well as Lebanon Community Action Partnership. Each department writes a portion of the plan based upon the guidelines and requirements, which were distributed by the Pennsylvania Department of Human Services on March 14th of this year 2020. The plan contains the required data to show what services and supports are provided with the block grant funds, as well as the number of individuals served with the grant funds. It is a rather large document. It's comprised of 83 pages in total. So I'm wondering if there are any questions for me regarding any portion of the plan?
Not at this time.
No particular question, but I would ask, do you have any idea how many man-hours are involved in this?
It's tremendous amount of man-hours. So the guidelines were published on March 14th. They give us two months to write the plan, hold two public hearings, then do a summary of all of those public hearings that are held. And, and so, gosh, man-hours. I know myself, I've probably spent probably 15 hours in total with all the meetings and, and portion of the plan that was written. So I can only imagine if we were to add up all the department heads and folks that are involved in the creation of that plan, it's a lot of man-hours.
But it's a very comprehensive report, and I apologize, I meant people-hours. Thank you, Holly.
Sure.
Any, any other questions? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? So moved.
Thank you so much. With your approval, the guidelines do require your written signatures on the Human Services Plan Assurance of Compliance, and that was provided to your office along with the document. So I do thank you for your support.
You're welcome.
Good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
And that signature will be needed tomorrow, deadline for the assurance of compliance. So I'll be here for your, your signature on the, on the table right by dawn.
Okay, next is alert or request. We'll bring in Susan Everly.
So we're running a little ahead of schedule. I'm not sure if we have everyone we need for that one. Let me just look for a moment here. Oh, yeah, we do. There's Matt Crocker. Matt Crocker, and I saw Susan on the list as well. Okay, my apology.
Bring the 11 o'clock meeting in.
While this is going on, we're, Mr. Crocker is going to have a PowerPoint, which you may have already seen, but he's going to bring it up on the screen during the meeting. When that time comes, we'll hand over that ability to him. So.
Hello, Susan.
Good morning.
Yeah, it's quite a high-tech.
Good morning.
Good morning. Are we ready to have a little bit of background work from you, Susan, and then we'll move with questions and hopefully we'll get a motion?
Absolutely. Thank you for having Matt and me here this morning. Matt Crocker is with the Hershey Company, and I just want to say that we're so fortunate in Lebanon County that we were able to land a Fortune 500 project. We all know the Hershey Company, they're a great company, great employer, and they decided to pick the Eastern Land Resources site in South Anvil Township. And the project is going to be 1.1 million square feet, and they're going to employ up to over maybe 220 employees with decent wages. So I'm just pleased to be bringing them here today. We've been working with them for a while behind the scenes. And South Lebanon, not South Lebanon, South Anvil Township and the school board both approved their LURDA. So Matt will be sharing information on the company, and then we're hopeful for your decision.
Matt, good morning.
You're muted, Matt.
There you go.
How are you?
Good morning.
I would just like to share a brief presentation and just go through it for you. So Commissioner Litz, Commissioner Ames, Commissioner Phillips, pleased this morning to represent the Hershey Company for consideration for this LURDA designation. This designation is significant to Hershey as it will impact the success of our operation on which we're embarking. All right, I'm just trying to manipulate my slides here. So Hershey's committed to an initiative to improve and add significant elements to its supply chain. So as part of this endeavor, Hershey will develop an 833,000-square-foot warehouse. I know Sue mentioned 1.1 million, so we are expandable up to 1.1 million, but the initial footprint will be 833,000 square feet for this fulfillment center. The site that we, as Sue mentioned, is in South Anvil Township. We're converting underutilized industrial zone land to its highest and best use. And ultimately, we're going to be able to maximize the assessed value of the property. And so these realized tax revenues by putting this property into operation are going to be significant to South Anvil Township, the Anvil Colonial School District, and of course, Lebanon County. Further, this operation creates significant employment opportunities, spanning the spectrum of skilled and professional employees. To give you the best idea of the dollars being invested into the development of the facility, I present to you the breakdown of large-budget dedications to the land purchase, roadway improvements, and to the site and building construction. The building being developed is unlike many developed over the last several years in and around Lebanon County. Distinguishing this building is its high quality of construction and its specified use. Hershey will invest in high-quality building products to assure longevity and durability. And also too, Hershey has further invested in excess land, as I pointed out earlier, to maintain this, to maintain future expansion opportunities. As is common, Hershey looks to the future when it comes to making these significant investments. The building can be expanded an additional 328,000 square feet, the 833,000 square feet, to a total of 1.1 million. The investment has several resultant impacts, most notably the employment opportunities, as I mentioned, the property tax revenue, sewer revenue to South Anvil Township Authority, and of course, the greater demand for goods and services in and around the county. Hershey's proud to locate this facility within Lebanon County. This is a significant opportunity to continue to develop and solidify a partnership between Hershey and Lebanon County. The company, like all companies, is a collection of assets. These assets, they start off as concepts, they develop into projects, and ultimately form an asset to the business. Projects must achieve performance metrics that measure its success relative to other projects and ultimately reach their full potential. The building Hershey will construct in Anvil has the potential to host both current and future initiatives. The designation by South Anvil Township and Anvil Colonial School District of a 10-year LURDA gave Hershey the confidence needed to make the investment in the land and the building. As we progress through the, through construction, into construction, further in, in the months to come, we continue to develop these initiatives to ensure maximum potential of the business unit that we will op, that will operate within. Maximum potential is our ability to manage ongoing expenses in favor of future investments in workforce. The impact of LURDA is a, is significant as Hershey continues to develop this project. An investment by Lebanon County provides the significant support to the burgeoning project and solidifies a decision to invest in workforce. Hershey is a company that focuses on the employee and his or her development as a leader and asset to the organization. Hershey demands this of its partners as well. Hershey will be creating opportunities, but with LURDA, Hershey can maximize the potential of those job opportunities. So why LURDA for Hershey? We must make the best business case among competing projects within the company. The better the project can meet those metrics created, creates the best chance for this project to remain and build on being the best capital investment alternative. Higher performance yields more investment, creating more opportunities for employment. Although Hershey is a large organization, this project must stand on its own and perform successfully. Much like a business starting up, Hershey is starting a business in Lebanon County. The team working on this project is committed to making this project as wildly successful as it can be, and the investment by Lebanon County takes Hershey a significant step forward toward achieving the goal of making this a success for the people of Lebanon. Thank you very much, and with that, I'll take your questions.
Matt, remind me, how big is the parcel?
The parcel that we acquired is 92 acres.
Thank you.
And I believe, if I'm not wrong, that there will, they will start accepting applications, perhaps the end of 2020? Is that correct, for people to get jobs?
I believe that is correct. I can, I can confirm that for you, but yes, the, the, the opportunities are to do that as quickly as we can.
And the URL, the website that I was given is hersheycareers.com if people want to watch that site.
Yes, correct.
All right, if there are no other questions right now, can we at least entertain a motion, and then we can have further discussion?
I'll make a motion to approve the LURDA.
I'll second the motion, Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the LURDA, and I'd just like to ask, or excuse me, expand the, how we, welcoming Hershey to Lebanon County in another way, you know, it's, it's a wonderful, we have a lot of Hershey employees living in, in Lebanon County already. And your reputation and what you will bring to our county is, it's just, just a great addition to what we're doing here. And the LURDA, my understanding is, will help accelerate the growth of the jobs. Looking at 250 and potentially 500 at some point, that the LURDA is a, a way of helping accelerate that to get to the 500 faster, so I fully support the, the LURDA effort.
Thank you.
I'd also like to add, if I may, that Hershey is a local company growing in this coronavirus environment despite a recession, and we congratulate them for being bold and brave and, and taking on this project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We're very appreciative of that.
Any other comment?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes, sir, Commissioner.
As, as most of you know, these LURDAs are somewhat troubling to me, and I fully understand the concept, so I don't need clarification on that. I'm a little disappointed in the process because it has always, these LURDAs have in the, previously come to us and in the decision-making process where we have an opportunity perhaps to encourage companies to locate here in Lebanon County. And I drive by this site in and out of Lebanon, and of course, the, the earth is already being moved out there, and you know, that's great, the project is in motion. But it appears to me, and this is not critical of anyone in particular, but it appears to me that this LURDA process is somewhat skewed in that. in that essentially, it seems like the county commissioners are asked at the 11th hour to put the LURDA on the agenda. And the school district and the municipalities have already had the information for in advance. So, and that's probably a, a, an issue that we have here within the county. So going forward, and I think I've made this request before, I would like to have that addressed. I've also given the reasons why I have voted against these LURDAs in the past. And I, I, I met with Jocelyn yesterday morning at a very nice meeting. And she certainly is an admirable representative of the Hershey Company. Indicated some things that helped me make my decision this morning. I have a long history with, with the Hershey Company. Both my parents worked for Hershey. That was their entire livelihood, their entire lives, and certainly gave me and my siblings our start. And I was very blessed to have the advantage of the Hershey Junior College, which Milton Hershey provided to his employees and the residents of Derry Township. So, and I had the pleasure of working at the Hershey Company for a two-year period and then during summer breaks while attending college. So it certainly is different than, you know, a dog food company coming in. Or the other thing that impressed me is that this is, this is owner occupied. It's not a landlord tenant, as many of these LURDAs that have been requested are. So I'm impressed by the fact that Hershey is building this for their own use. And as Commissioner Phillips already said, we have a lot of folks in Lebanon County that make their living and have good jobs working for the Hershey Company. So other than the, the scheduling technicalities and so on, I, I think it's a good project for Lebanon County. And I'm, I'm willing to vote in favor of the LURDA.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comment or question regarding the motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign, so ordered. You have your LURDA. Thank you.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure.
All right. Thank you, Susan. Matthew?
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda is Betsy.
Yeah.
Lyons.
Just looking to see if they're here on the list.
And Lyons is there.
All right. Dan, if you want to raise your hand, we'll pull you in here. It's a little ahead of schedule, but it's okay. You're available. Do you see him there, Jay?
DL.
I don't see her. Can she raise her hand?
It's DL, Dan Lyons.
There it is.
There we go. All right. And if you'll unmute, you'll be ready to go.
You're muted, Dan. Jay, can you assist him with an unmute?
Jay's muted.
I did send the ask to unmute twice.
She unmuted.
Sorry. He, he may not be at his terminal. He may just have us dialed up.
There he is. Morning, Daniel.
Good morning.
Good morning. And welcome.
Dan, we're a little ahead of schedule, but hopefully you're prepared if you want to go a little bit early here.
Okay, great. Thank you. Yes. Sorry, again, I just connected here. I have two items of, of business today in the community development programs. The first is for the Community Development Block Grant Program. And it is a budget revision, excuse me, a revision to several fiscal years of CDVG program budgets. And in general, the, the purpose of this budget revision is to clean up activities in older fiscal years that where, where the activity has been completed and there remains a small balance of funds unexpended. So we're, we're cleaning up those so that we can close out those projects and then moving the funds to activities that can spend them more quickly. And also, there's a little bit of extra funding that's freed up in doing this that we have earmarked for the Volunteers in Medicine Clinic, which had requested additional funding earlier this year. So it's, it, it entails revising several years' worth of budgets, which makes it a little bit complicated to present visually. But the, all the activities are previously approved activities. We're not deleting any activity outright, and we're not introducing any new activities into the program. These are all activities that were approved in each year's fiscal year budget. We're simply cleaning up older budgets and moving the funds among activities in different years in order to expend the older funds more quickly, which will improve our, our timeliness of expenditure for the program. And then again, it's just the Volunteers in Medicine activity that is seeing any new funding. And that's in response to requests from them earlier this year, based on increased activity at their, in their operation. And so we were able to free up some money in, in revising and cleaning up these old activities. And that's our recommendation.
Any motion that we have an interest in making and then we can have further discussion?
I'll make a motion.
I'll, I'll second it.
It's removed and seconded that we approved these budget revisions. Any discussion? If not all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Okay, Dan, next.
Thank, thank you, thank you. Then the next item of business is for the, the home program. This is a, a, a grant program. The county received a, a grant in 2018. And it is to fund the county's first-time home buyer program. And now with, with the, that grant coming to a close, originally scheduled to be next year, we're looking for ways to accelerate our expenditure of those grant funds. And we've been in, in a conversation with DCD, the Department of Community and Economic Development, who administers this grant at the state level. And we've been trying to come up with ideas for how we can get that money spent more quickly. And what we settled on was expanding the first-time home buyer program to provide additional rehab assistance. So the program currently provides up to $7,000 of rehab assistance for first-time buyers to improve the homes that they're buying. This would expand that to a maximum of $15,000 and also introduce a closing cost assistance component, which would mean the program then provides a mortgage principal subsidy similar to a down payment, a rehab component, and a closing cost component. So it's making the first-time home buyer program more generous and increasing the amount of assistance for each participant. And then the second aspect of this is to introduce another longstanding housing program of the counties, which is the Owner Occupied Housing Rehab Program. Bring that program into this grant contract. While at the same time, again, expanding the assistance for the rehab program and making the, the terms of the financing more generous to participants.
I'll make a motion to accept the changes to the first-time buyer program as presented by the, the community development.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions regarding the motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Thank you, Dan. Any, any other comments from you, Dan?
That's everything. Thank you, Commissioners. Appreciate the support.
Yep, you're welcome. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Jamie, we are ahead. If you want, want to fill in with some other things unless Erin's on, on deck?
I'm looking to see if she's on deck.
She is here.
Okay. Now we can keep going, Mr. Chairman. That's all right.
Sure.
Good morning, Commissioners. Hi.
Morning, Erin.
Hi. So I'm here this morning to present a bunch of items. First up, I have third-quarter invoices for fiscal year 1920. So the total amount of those third-quarter invoices is $1,618,472.76. I would ask that you approve third-quarter invoices.
Make a motion to approve third-quarter invoices for children and youth.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor to approve the third quarter invoices. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so ordered. All right, Erin.
Okay. Next up, I have our service contracts for fiscal year 2020, 2021. So we have a total of 33 service provider contracts. Of those 33 providers, 21 are not requesting any increases. 12 of those service providers are requesting increase, which the average increase is 4%. All of them are in our budgeted amounts. The highest increase that we're seeing is the Lebanon YMCA Child Care Program. And that is due to COVID-19 and the guidelines associated with the children, keeping the children healthy and safe while in their programming. I ask that you approve our service contracts for fiscal year 2020, 21.
I'll make a motion that we approve the service contracts for 2020, 2021 as requested.
Second.
Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. Any questions on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so ordered. Okay.
Next up, I have our Avanco contract. So this is $30,000 annually. And this is for our Automated Case Management System that we use daily to input all of our data for all of our cases. I would ask that you approve Avanco's contract in the amount of $30,000 for fiscal year 2020, 2021.
I'll move to approve the $30,000 contract with Avanco.
I'll second the motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any comment or question regarding the motion? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Next up, I have the Central County's Youth Center contract. So this is a juvenile probation contract that requires Commissioner's signature. So they are requesting $290 per day for their secured detention program. And this is for the 2021 contract as well. I would ask that you approve the Central County's Youth Center contract.
Motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the contract as presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the Central County's Youth Center contract for juvenile probation. Any comment or question? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Next, I have the York County Youth Development Center contract. This is also a contract that requires Commissioner's signature. They are requesting $375.60 per day for their community residential shelter program. And this is also a contract for fiscal year 2020, 2021. I would ask that you approve York County Youth Development Center's contract.
I'll make a motion to approve the $375.60 per day for York County Youth Development Center.
I'll second the motion.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any questions regarding the motion? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Okay. And finally, I have a contract for Northampton County Juvenile Justice Center. This is also a juvenile probation contract that requires Commissioner's signature. They're requesting $270 per day for both their secured detention program as well as their specialized treatment programs for both males and females. This is also for fiscal year 2021. I am asking for your approval.
I'll make a motion to accept the proposal from Northampton for the 2021 fiscal year.
Second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed, same sign, so moved.
Hi, thank you. That's all I have today. I appreciate it.
All right, Erin, we appreciate the very professional way that you are running your department and your staff. You guys have difficult, you know, issues to deal with, and you do it very well, and we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a great day.
You too.
Okay, I think, actually, I think everybody who's on the agenda is in the queue, so we can probably just keep on going. That's all right.
Yes.
So next up, we'd have Carol Davies. I did see Carol in there. There she is.
Hi, Carol.
Good morning. Good morning. Thank you for having us here today. I'm Carol Davies. I'm the Administrator of the Area Agency on Aging. On standby for our agency, we also have Ann Devine, our Deputy Administrator, Doreen Klein, our Fiscal Officer, and Dean Nice, our Director of Senior Center Services. I'm here today to request the Commissioner's approval on our contracts for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year that began on July 1st. We provided a list of 37 different contracts with a value of $1,186,000. As far as the contracts go, there are three items I want to call to your attention. Generally, the Department of Aging limits us to any increases for our providers by the amount that they allow in our Aging Block Grant Program Directive. We understand that amount to be a 2% increase for this fiscal year. So for many of our provider contracts, we have built that amount into what we have requested in the attached sheet. There is one provider that we would like to add to the sheet. We just found out in the time between when we sent this sheet and today that one of our providers, the provider is called Right at Home. They provide personal care and they are located here in Lebanon. It's a franchise of a larger group. And the Lebanon franchise will be closing its office, but the York franchise is willing to take on people that we have in this particular area and continue to serve them. So we would like to add the York office of Right at Home as an additional contractor on this sheet at the same rate that we pay the Lebanon office, which they have agreed to accept, of $18.90 an hour. So we would like to add that to our list. I also want to comment on two of the contracts that we have listed. There are two contracts where we have providers who have requested more than a 2% increase. One is the Myers Town Baptist Church where, which is the facility that hosts our Myers Town Senior Center. They have requested a 10% increase. And PCN, our contracted meal provider, they have requested a 3% increase. So in both of these cases, we have informed the provider that any increase such as that is subject not only to the County Commissioner's approval, but also to the approval of the Department of Aging through a special waiver process that we must follow. At this point, we know the Department of Aging has pushed back on the increase requested by the Myers Town Church. So we are, have gone back to the church to see if we can come up with an amount that is more acceptable to the Department of Aging. So I'm not exactly sure how you would like to handle that for this meeting today, if you want to exclude that one. meeting today, if you want to exclude that one, or if you want to make some other decision on that. We also do not have a response yet from the Department of Aging about the PCN increase. So I don't know how you want to handle those two items.
Well, can we do them subject to the approval, or would you rather us?
That's fine with me. That works for me.
Yeah. What's the pleasure of our board here? Is there a motion to accept as is and subject to the approval of those two?
I have a concern about the 10% increase. Could we just not act on that that facility? Just leave that out?
Well, in this instance, we aren't, we would not be acting on it unless it's approved by the state.
Okay, all right.
I mean, is that accurate?
That's correct. We could not allow anything that they did not approve and you did not approve.
Does that help, Bill? If that get?
Yeah, I hope, and of course, if the if the state wants to reimburse for that amount, I guess, I suppose that solves the issue for me.
One note in Carol's summary there regarding the Myers Town Senior Center is that that rent has stayed the same since inception in 2012. So I think this is the first time they're asking for an increase. I don't know whether the state will consider that when they look at it, or if that's a consideration for you, Carol.
The state has has said that 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 they, that not asking for several years isn't necessarily a reason to approve in this particular case. I will say that most of our senior center contracts have not been increased during the last several years. Their current rate that we're paying at the senior center is not the highest rate we pay. It's not the lowest rate we pay. And if we would grant them that increase, they would still not be the highest rate that we pay for a senior center site, but they would be close.
And I understand, because I had the same question about Myers Town that I asked Carol about last night, that they did give one month of rent free, but we haven't had the senior center open for several months, and Carol also needs more room. So if indeed more room is included in the price, I think that would give more leverage with the state. If not, then the state, I think, will come back to the 2%, or maybe they'd give an exception to 3%. So as long as we are letting Carol and the state finish their negotiations and not locking in the price that they're requesting, I would be favorable to go ahead with a motion.
And that includes the York franchise substituting for, you know, Right at Home for Lebanon. Is that? That's part of this as well?
We would actually have to include both in the listing because
Okay.
Lebanon franchise is continuing through July 31st.
Okay. All right, is that acceptable? We have a motion. Is there a second, Joel?
Second.
Okay. And we're clear on what we're doing. We're not accepting the 10% until whatever is approved by the state is approved for Myers Town. Okay, all right. Any other discussion or clarification needed?
I would just point out
Yes, Carol, go ahead.
I would point out that as we typically do when we present our contracts, we do present our budget for the fiscal year 2021 for your review only. As you can see in the budget, we receive an additional amount of funding for the fiscal year from COVID virus funding from both the FFCRA Act and the CARES Act. So with those funds and our typical aging funds, we would not be requesting any additional funds from the general fund to fund these contracts for the year.
Thank you. All right, if not any further discussion, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, so moved.
Thank you, Carol.
Carol, you good? Okay.
John Schott would be up next with Renaissance Crossroads Program. And Audrey as well, and I did, I think I saw Audrey in the queue. There's John. There we go.
All right. Morning, John.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
Good morning, John and Audrey.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Okay, thank you. John Schott, Criminal Justice Advisory Board Planner with the Office of Probation Services, and joined, joining me is Audrey Rockow, who's Acting Director of Probation Services. We've requested the time this morning to seek your authorization to prepare and submit a grant to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency to continue our intermediate punishment treatment program of the county, which is a viable alternative to incarceration for eligible offenders. And this is an application that must be submitted no later than July 30th. So under the grant's guidelines, Lebanon County is eligible to apply for up to $500,000 for the current fiscal year retroactive to July 1st. So in response to that announcement, we're working on a proposal that would continue the very successful Renaissance Crossroads Program for nonviolent offenders with drug or alcohol addictions. This is a very intensive 34-month in and outpatient treatment program administered by Pennsylvania Counseling Services out of leased space at the Lebanon VA Medical Center. Under the budget we're crafting, most of the funding, that would be approximately 85%, would be set aside for treatment, with some funds appropriated toward the cost of supervision. Crossroads, as you know, has been operating in the county since 2001 with very positive results, and we continue to believe that it merits continued funding by the state. The document that I attached to the memo is the budget portion of the application. The good news is, in years past, this application does not require a cash or in-kind match by the county. So what, with your authorization, we'll continue to fine tune and update and complete other sections of the application or the narratives over the next two weeks, and then submit a responsible plan to the commission by July 30th. So I do ask for your approval to continue with this project.
Do you have any?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Commissioner.
I don't know. I was just going to ask a question. Do you have any statistics on the number of graduates versus the number starting the program and any recidivism rates?
Well, we have stats that we will, of course, be reporting as part of the application process from July, from July 1st, 2009 until the present. Only, we've had 42, when I say Pennsylvania Counseling, through the program, it said 42 offenders being terminated from the program, but only one of them has been terminated because of a new drug arrest. The other 41, according to stats provided to me by Mandy Newmaster, who is one of the administrators for the program, the terminations were for other reasons, some sort of technical violation, but they were not for some sort of drug or alcohol arrest, which is, you know, we would consider that, you know, real positive. And since February 21st, 2001, we've had 247 participants in the program, and most have really been able to complete the stay successfully. 143, according to the statistics. And 90 have successfully completed the entire 34-month program.
Very intensive for those candidates. But the results speak for themselves.
I'll make a, I'll make a motion to allow them to continue with the program and complete the plan.
Second the motion.
We have a motion and a second to continue this process. Comments from you, John, or Audrey? We good?
Thank you for your continued support.
If there's no other comment, all in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I have the signature pages with Dawn that are also required as part of the application process. So thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm pretty sure Michael's in the queue as well. For his request.
Good morning.
Hi, Michael. You went you. There you go.
Morning, Michael.
Morning, Michael Anderson, Chief Clerk, Voter Registration. I am here actually for a Commissioner action today, which is to look at the purchase. Why does it keep doing that? Sorry, don't know how to use my computer apparently. Looking at the purchase of trying, as you know, with the November election and mail-in absentee ballots, we are looking at trying to canvas, pre-canvas, these ballots in a timely fashion so that election results are not being withheld or weighted on in our county. So one of the things I'm proposing is to purchase a inbound mail processor, which is the MI306. And I did give each of you the information on this system. It is a high-speed mail opener, and it can do up to 40,000 envelopes per hour, which would more than enough be what we would need here in our county. And what it would do ultimately would be to save us time. I believe what we use in the primary worked, but it was very time-consuming. And it, that system, those openers used a blade to open the envelopes. And we did have about 100 ballots that were damaged because of how we opened them, which actually, in the sense of how many we had, was not bad. 13,000 envelopes and only having 100 wasn't bad, but with this system, it actually uses a milling process and not a blade. And so the amount, speaking with other counties, had no issues with any ballots being destroyed because that blade not being part of the the process. And so what I'm requesting is, there's different options that the company gave us. And one of the things I should have mentioned at the beginning is that we have two different funding sources that we could use to to pay for this. We have the the CARES Act for election purposes, and then we also have a HAVA grant. So the HAVA grant for us is roughly just over $70,000. The CARES Act funds are just over $60,000. So what I was proposing is, this is something that would be eligible for that grant money. And I was looking at option number three, which is not only the opener, but it also has the sorter and the ability to print with a belt, which would be about $17,325 to purchase with yearly maintenance of $2,600. And that is a CoStar's price, meaning that that is something that the state has negotiated with this vendor, and that is a price that's being offered to all counties.
Well, I opened envelopes with a team of three other teams of ladies, three on a team, for eight hours one day, and I know that the, it was, they did it with a happy face, but it was a long process. And I also saw at least six myself that were mutilated, so to speak, where one person's vote was eradicated. It was just wiped away because it it was destroyed by the paper cutter. So I think we do need to, you know, be aware of that because in a close election, it could make a difference. This, in this election, it didn't make a difference, but who's to say in a future election it wouldn't? So I would move to purchase this new milling machine recommended by Michael.
And I'll second that motion. I think it's something that's that's really needed. So I appreciate Michael bringing this to us.
Thank you. Michael, I have two questions. One is, can you just give me two seconds on the milling process versus the blade? How that is so fast and so clean?
Yeah, so obviously, you know, blade going through through the envelope to open it would obviously go through and hit anything that's in inside. This milling process is basically, and I'm no expert, so you have to bear with me, but my my understanding is that with this, it basically brings right up against the the envelope, and it basically just rubs it until it actually opens. The milling process is my understanding. I talked to some other counties that actually use this equipment, and they actually, Lycoming County is the director I spoke to, he actually said they only had one envelope that actually had an issue, and it was user error. They had no ballots that were were destroyed at all by using this this milling process.
That's incredible. The second question, or Jamie, did you have something? We had 13,000 for the primary in terms of the absentees. Any idea with a November election, what you'd be looking at in terms of projections?
Sure. So I actually did a little bit of work while I was on the, looked at some of that while you were with your other individuals today. So we already have over 10,000 ballots that we know we're going to have to be sending as mail for people that were on the permanent list.
Wow.
So 10,200 are already in there. The state has already opened the portal, votespa.com to allow people to go in and online request mail-in and absentee ballots. We have 22 batches already in there, and that was opened on the 29th of June. And batches are usually 25 applications each. So that just gives you an idea of just this early, how how many people have already expressed interest in doing it. My projection, for what it's worth, I was way off in the primary. You know, I thought we were going to have about 7,000 in the primary, and we had 15,000. So I'm looking probably in the 25,000, 30,000 range. It's very possible for us. I believe voter turnout will be in the 80% range. And obviously, where we stand with 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 COVID will be probably a big indication on that as far as how, you know, people want to vote in person or by mail, but they'll have that option. So that's kind of what we're looking at, probably double. It's kind of what we're probably preparing for. And besides just the backend opening envelopes, we're looking at other ways of handling that volume. And, you know, there'll be more to come on that, and, you know, that I'll keep you guys informed of. But we're looking at, you know, how we're going to process those ballots, print them, nail them. And so we're working on some things with that as well.
Well, I'd say with the expansion of the mail and the expansion of the precincts, the five busiest have been expanded. So both of those in concert should really help with the wait times.
Absolutely.
Yep, so it's all good. Thank you very much for everything.
Yeah, I just want to, three things to add or to follow up on. The process, again, is the process for opening. As Michael said, it's sort of, you know, there's no blade. And actually, to give you a visual, it's sort of like a grinding wheel or a milling wheel that as the envelope passes by, it grinds away the very edge of the envelope because the byproduct is a whole bunch of little pieces of paper, sort of dust, yeah, paper dust essentially is the byproduct.
A chads or no?
No. No. So it grinds the edge of the envelope instead of slicing it. That was one thing in this, and I also wanted to mention that the prior process where we also used openers, but they were very small, very slow. You know, they were about $300 apiece, I think. We had three of those in the primary, and while they certainly helped over having to open by hand, it was a very low-volume, time-consuming process. So I think, I think probably a lot of counties are finding their way through, you know, what will work better and better each time. And lastly, I just wanted to follow up on a comment that Commissioner Litz made. She said, you know, about the potential for changing an outcome, or I forget exactly how you worded it, Commissioner, but the 100 damaged were remedied. I mean, they were, they were resolved. It's not as though they're damaged beyond, or that they were damaged beyond the ability to count them.
Yes, there were some that were damaged for LeAnn Burchak, who was running for delegate. For LeAnn Burchick, who was running for delegate, her name was totally obliterated.
Okay, but the rest, the ballot itself, I mean, okay, so there was, there was one in a case of an office. All right, I wasn't aware of that. But I was thinking in terms of the entire ballot being distributed, you know, some sort of.
There was one specific name that was on the fold that continually got eliminated.
Yeah, you know, in response to that, it was where we had no idea if there was a vote there or not because of the way the blade actually took off that whole line of the ballot. So when you lined it up, and we did recreate it, like you said, and we did all those votes counted, it's just you were not able to tell if there was any vote because of that whole line. So one of the things we talked about is, and we kept this method, is, okay, what do we do with the ballot so that we don't have that fold issue? But with this process, we actually don't have to worry about it because it's not going to any longer rip that or tear that. Like I said, overall, the 100 compared to 13,000 was excellent compared to what some other counties dealt with. But even with this process, and I need to have it even more, it doesn't look like we'll have any issues at all.
Any other discussion?
The only thing I also wanted to bring out, Commissioners, and one of the things, Sally, I don't know if this would be something that might be able to help you, but with this purchase, obviously, we would only need it for election time. But any department that would have a large number of incoming, you know, mailings that would need help opening, this would be something other departments could use besides just my department. So something to keep in mind as well.
I'm sure there'd be a fee involved, but that's.
Small fee for you, Sally.
I didn't make a note, but do we have a motion in a second on this? We do. Okay, thank you, James. All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, so moved. We do have a question, and we can entertain that now.
Go ahead.
Hi, Michael, quick question. Laura LeBeau speaking. Do you actually, with this new machine or with the old one, were you running those mail-in ballots through twice because you've got the exterior envelope and then the privacy envelope?
Yes, so with the old system, we did them twice. And with this new system, we will be doing them twice. So, you know, obviously, the more envelopes we have, in with this purchase, it was going to cut that down tremendously because we'll be able to not only run them through, but then, you know, once we can pull them out, then we can run them through again to then pull out the ballot.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Okay, Jamie, what's next?
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Michael.
Actually, since that's an assessment board function, if we could just finish up Commissioner Ford things, I can do the items that I have here. And then Dan's in the queue there will bring him in.
Okay.
All right, first, I've got applications for county liquid fuels funds from four municipalities. Those would be Cornwall Borough requesting $4,112 for their allocation of a project cost of $8,400 to do general maintenance on borough roads. Andville Township intends to also use theirs for general maintenance, $4,800, and their allocation would be $4,767. Bethel Township, also for general maintenance, $5,700. Same number for the grant being requested. And Heidelberg Township, looking for 2028 to Seal Coat Township Roads, total project cost of $45,000. Their allocation would be $4,069.
I'll make a motion to approve the liquid fuels allocations as read.
Second.
They're moved in second, and then we approve the distribution of the liquid fuels monies to those municipalities. Any question or comment? Having none all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, so moved.
Okay, next item is a follow-up to your last meeting when you opened bids for the Lebanon Valley Rail Trail Phase 9C segment with nine bids. And that bid has been reviewed by the county's bridge engineer, Wilson Consulting, as well as the purchasing agent. And we recommended to award that bid to Farhat Excavating at a base bid of $209,770. Again, that's Phase 9C of the Lebanon Valley Rail Trail. It is up in the, just a bit north of Jonestown. It's 0.3 miles of new multi-use trail construction, 0.14 miles of trail paving, and two tenths of a mile of minor drainage improvement, sky rail installation, alternates for construction of pedestrian bridge.
I'll make a motion to approve the acceptance and award of the bid for $209,770 to Farhat for the Lebanon Valley Rail Trail 9C section.
Second motion.
It's removed in second, and then we approve that qualified bid for the Rail Trail 9C. Any comment or question or discussion needed? If not all in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, so moved.
I have a late addition here, and it's up to you if you want to consider it today. I'll explain it so that, basically, it's a pretty straightforward request. These are the provider contracts for the Renova Center. And they don't have nearly as many as you've entertained from some of the other human service agencies, behavioral health agencies. But Roman dropped these off and went over them with me. And all but one of the contracts being renewed has, they all, they have no increase, no requested increase. The one that might have an increase is DB Fisher Transportation, but due to COVID, they haven't been able to get together on negotiating or proposing a rate. What Roman is suggesting is that when they get that, he'll bring that one to you separately. But I'm happy to walk through these, if you don't mind, and we'll, and you can consider them. Is that all right with the board?
Yeah, I'm good to consider it today if it's good with, what's the pleasure of?
Yeah, it's fine.
So First Aid and Safety Patrol is the first one. They provide emergency and non-emergency ambulatory transports at a rate of $40 per bed annually for 2021. And that, the cost of that is taken out of each county, each resident account. There's no county support needed. Developmental Disabilities Resources provides psychological evaluations for each resident and develops behavioral health plans to support their adaptive skill levels and so on. That is $94 an hour. No county support needed. Apex Rehab Solutions provides physical occupational and speech therapy for Renova Center residents. And those rates are $70 an hour for physical therapy, $68 for occupational therapy, and $68 for speech therapy. No county support needed. Fredericksburg Community Health Center is the medical director for the Renova Center. They provide 24/7 administrative and direct care services, including examinations, treatment, and referrals for all Renova Center residents. Their rate is $1,060 per month, which is the same, again, as the 2019-20 rate. And the, there's no county support needed there. And the last one is Effort Area Rehab Services, or known as EARS. And they provide adult training services and work activities for 12 individuals at Renova Center, seven full-time, five part-time services. And their rates are actually by the quarter hour. They are $4.01 per quarter hour for adult training, $2.27 per quarter hour for work activity services, no proposed change for the new year, and no county support. We can get back to you on the DB Fisher Transportation Service then, once that's resolved.
All right, what's your pleasure in attending the motion?
I'll make a motion to accept the new contract proposals as presented by Roman Chee.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's removed in second, and then we approve those rates. And any further discussion, anything else, Jamie, on this?
No, I see Laura LeBeau is still on the screen. Does she have a question on this, Laura? Or we just still have you there?
Yeah, no, no, I'm good. I didn't have my hand raised.
Okay. Okay.
All in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Same sign, so moved.
Okay, then you would go on to the Assessment Board for a number of decisions that Dan Seaman, the chief assessor, has for you. They do not, he does not have any hearings scheduled any longer for this afternoon. All have been resolved, and I think he's looking for a, looking for action on you or motions on these.
That on another link, Jamie.
Pardon me?
Is that going to be continued, or is that a new link?
No, that's on here, Dan. You, did we have a raised hand? It's a Davis came in for a moment.
Yeah, Dan Seaman is DS.
No, I actually selected the wrong one.
Oh.
Yeah, there's two of them.
And may I ask, should we adjourn our regular, are we finished with the business?
You can, you can recess or adjourn, actually. I would recess in case you have any raised hands on the backside of the assessment.
Okay, we'll recess the meeting and move to Commissioner Litz and the Assessment Board.
Dan, would you like to present your request?
Yes, I am here. Daniel Seaman, Lebanon County Assessment Office, here on behalf of the, for the Board of Assessments. We have five appeals outstanding, and we have discussed adjusted values for those appeals with each property owner. And I just need your approval on those. And then I also do have two exemption requests. So the appeals themselves are, and I hope you have the information that I sent yesterday, and we're able to look at those, look at that information. The first one is number 2020-84, and it is 109 Ann Valley Drive. And we discussed a adjusted value down to 505,900.
Is there any, are there any questions, or is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommended value.
I'll second the motion.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
The next one is 2020-85, and that's 500 East Main Avenue. And they agreed to, or looked at, an adjusted value of 671,200.
And then what town is that?
Oh, that's in Myers Town.
Myers Town. Is there, are there any questions, or is there a motion?
I'll move it.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
2020-86 is 735 Mechanic Street, and that's in Lebanon. And the adjusted value there is 213,900.
Make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
2020-87 is at 1036 Kathleen Street in Lebanon. And the adjusted value there is 95,300.
Also move.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
And the last appeal is 2020-88, and that's at 13 Green Acres. And the adjusted value there is 22,200.
So move.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Dan, you have exemptions as well?
Yes, I have two exemption requests. And the first one is Seventh Day Adventist Church up at 370 North 7th Street in the city. And it's a church, and they have regularly stated religious services. And also, in this building, they have several apartments. And Carl reviewed those, and those apartments are not being used for any income or anything at this point. So we may review that down the road in a few years, just to make sure. But in talking with Solicitor Dave Warner, yeah, he has recommended that we approve this for exemption.
I'm sorry, what was, was it approved for?
Yes, approved for exemption.
I'll move that we approve the Seventh Day Adventist request.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, and the other one is a property owned by Summit International School of Ministry. And it's at 74 Harrison School Road out near Grantville. And it is used for housing for employees for the Summit School. And what they do there is the compensation that the residents get from this, from the Summit School of Ministry is part, this housing is part of that. So pretty much, they live there rent-free and work at Summit School of Ministry. And speaking with the solicitor again, he has recommended that we approve this for exemption.
Based on the solicitor's recommendation, I move that we give them an exemption.
I'll second the motion.
I do have a question, Dan. Thank you, gentlemen. I just remember this coming up a couple of times before. What is different between before and now?
We've approved some in the past, and we haven't approved some in the past. The main difference was depending on who was occupying and how much compensation they received, and if they're, if they were paying any kind of rent. At this one, they are not paying any rent at all. Their compensation for working is living the house, so.
Okay, so it all, what if the, what if the terms of the leases change?
I guess I would have to defer to Dave on that one. I guess we could review it. We could review it yearly, I guess, so.
Yeah, if I may, Commissioner Litz.
Yes, please.
Yeah, we always run into these gray areas on some of these properties where there's a potential for a mixed use or mixed purpose. Like even initially on this property, I think there was some indication that maybe there was a partial rent being paid, or maybe some of the units, there was some additional rent for a significant other or spouse to reside there. But then the clarification came back from the property owner that it was solely for the use of the employee and just for, again, a change of compensation. So the lines here are kind of gray and messy. And we always run into this situation where potentially the property owner could change, slightly modify the use or terms. And there's no real mechanism for us to be in the loop and be aware of that immediately. We really would have to schedule these for some kind of regular review, request a recertification from the property owner that they're still maintaining the exemption status.
So Dan's suggestion carries value, and we can pass the motion providing him the opportunity to conduct an annual review.
Okay.
That'll be fine with me.
Is that an approved amendment to your motion, Commissioner?
Yes, sir.
I heard a confirmation from both. So that being said, if there are no questions, we'll call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Is there anything else, Dan?
No, that should do it. And that, we'll do a yearly review on this, so.
Thank you. Can I have a motion to, I'm sorry?
Thank you.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you, gentlemen. A motion carries.
We will resume our public meeting for any last. Jay, anything going on there?
Yes, there's one hand.
Sorry, Jay, is that?
We have one raised hand.
Yeah.
Okay, bring that in.
Okay, Commissioners, Laura LeBeau again speaking. I received a news release late yesterday from the Office of Congressman Dan Muser, where he had written a letter to Governor Tom Wolf urging the governor to release COVID-19 Community Relief Block Grant Program Funds that were entitled for Lebanon County. that were entitled for Lebanon County. And I was just wondering if any of you could comment on that, how much we're talking about, and what the status is.
I have no particular comment. It's a process we're working through. So it is $12.8 million is the amount of the CARES grant. It's a block grant, so that, we're just, you know, waiting for this process to play out.
What is the process?
Well, the letter that Congressman Muser sent yesterday to ask the governor to release the funds.
Now, are these, I'm sorry, are these funds that come directly to the county and then they're parceled out to other entities, or how does that work?
Yes.
Yes, directly to the county, and there are six categories that the money will be distributed through and must be spent by the end of the year. Beyond that, Jamie, is there anything you want to add?
No, that's correct.
I can just add a little clarity that the governor's office did notify the county that we will not be receiving the funds. The deadline was yesterday. And each commissioner reached out to a different federal legislator since they provided the funding to ask for them to intervene. And thus, the one news release went out.
Who did you, who did you reach out to, Senator?
To Senator Casey.
Okay. And, I mean, is it, would it be fair to say that it, if you would comment, that this might be retaliation for the vote in which the two majority commissioners moved the county into yellow even though the state hadn't authorized it? Is that your feeling as to why those funds are being held up or denied?
Yes, I think it was Section E that they felt was violated, but we did not get a written decision. It was verbal, so we're waiting to see if we get a written decision.
Okay.
Anything else?
No other questions.
What's that?
No other questions at this time.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, we stand adjourned. Thank you very much.